Our agenda.
Can you turn it sideways and get a profile?
Mark, do you have an extra agenda? You know how I like to go down through that.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you. Alrighty.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, so here we are. Privilege of the floor. It looks like everybody here works for us, so no privilege of the floor.
At least at the start.
Financial reports. Fiscal 2021 expenditure and revenue. I think I saw that we have not expended more than the percentage were through the year.
That's correct. We're currently sixty-one and a half percent through the year and sixty percent spent in town operations, not counting the capital items. So we're doing well and our revenues are at fifty-nine point nine percent. So we are tracking very close to budget.
I got one. We are way ahead on permits. These are an interest.
Yes.
Do we expect that to continue or are we plateaued?
No, we are, we just got another building permit today for a new house. That'll be another $6,000 permit.
And you also had a note that we had already done everything, or most of what was required on our debts this year.
Yes, debt service right now, interest is ninety-six percent paid. The principal is seventy-one point one. So those are big expenditures that lead to the, but they're in the sixty point two percent.
They're in the sixty point two percent, yeah.
So that's on the good side.
Okay.
We reminder that we are going to have at the, I'm assuming we'll have a meeting in two weeks because at that meeting we will give you the revenue report with our recommended changes in departmental revenues. Right? We get to update it for the MS four thirty-four. So we'll have those recommendations for you. Like Mike was asking with permits and all of that stuff, we need to adjust because, you know, we're continuing to see revenues, motor vehicle registrations are way ahead. Camp registrations were way ahead of the historic.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is like motor vehicles were running twenty percent ahead of budget.
Right, right.
So.
Alright.
Alright, another question. I'm trying to remember. Did we budget a full reeval for next year?
No, because we haven't budgeted anything for next year, but it is in the plan.
Okay, I'm just thinking we're gonna need that.
Yes, we will, we will have the assessors put together.
Right, and we haven't spent very much this year at all. We've only spent four out of eighteen.
Right, but there are expenditures coming in there. Software renewals that come up at the end of the year are in there because it's the assessing software. So it's included in that line. So we, we are tracking slightly below the budgeted amount for assessing services. But it's not as great as it looks.
Just a function of the year.
It's just a function of where we are.
Yeah, okay. Now I just thought we were running ahead of.
Okay. Alright, what's the revenue detail report?
We, Judy and I pulled that back and we are gonna show it to you for the next meeting because we have some questions that we need to find out additional. One of the things I need to, Dave and I need to talk about ambulance numbers, ambulance revenue numbers because they're significantly down. So we have to go back to Comstar, our billing agency, and find out what's in the queue. But we're looking at numbers as far as numbers of calls and we're probably gonna have to reduce our estimate.
Except we're going back to a full ski season. I think our number of calls could be artificially lowered from last year.
Well, but that won't pick, I mean, this is just through December thirty-one. So that'll be reflected in the twenty-two budget. So we're, we're concerned right now that we may be something like twenty, twenty-five thousand. No, twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Oh, on, on the.
On the estimates for revenues. But we have to talk to Comstar and find out what is in the queue because they actually can tell us what they're projecting to collect.
Okay.
So.
Alrighty. Anything else on the finances? Okay. Minutes review and approval. We have the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting minutes and folks commented on those.
Can I? The changes.
Right. So can I have a motion to?
I will make the motion to approve the minutes as amended. I will second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Department head, before we get to that, do we have, should we include the appointments as part of the public safety?
Yes, we should.
We have an email from David about position appointments. So for emergency management director, and again, this is a result of Chris retiring, although I see Chris's name on here in several places.
Yeah, I have a question. It was part of the last part of our private conversation.
Well, we will modify. What I would like to do is make, even if it's
Make these appointments temporary.
On a temporary basis, make the appointments the way Dave's laid them out and then we'll come back to you with the plan at the beginning of September.
Okay. So for emergency manager, director and assistant emergency manager, directors, we have Dave Noise, Mark Dakota and Pat Payer. Or I'm gonna do these all and then we'll just, unless somebody thinks, yeah. For fire warden and deputy wardens, we have Dave Noise, Pat Payer, Jeff Dropkin and Chris Hodges. For health officer and deputy health officer, that would be Dave Noise and Pat Payer. For code enforcement officer, we would have Dave Noise and Chris Hodges. For building inspector, we would have Dave Noise and Chris Hodges. Can I have a motion to approve all those position appointments?
I will make that motion.
Can I have a second?
I will second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll go over to David. David? If you haven't had enough of us.
No. Whatever. I can take this opportunity. We can talk about the, just go over the national night out numbers. I don't know if any of you had a chance to attend. I'll remember seeing everybody that was there. It was very well attended. We had great, a lot of great support. So thank you for your, your continued support for this event. It seems to be a really great event for all three towns that is very well attended. We had a, we carried over our balance last year of twenty-six hundred, almost twenty-seven hundred dollars. Between the number of donations, we received a little over eighty-six hundred dollars in donations for this event, which allowed us to, one, increase the amount of food that we, that we buy and offer for this event. We bought some parking signs and some other signage that will continue to be reused every year. But we still came out with a net total of about ninety-five hundred and fifty dollars. And that was at no direct cost to the town other than, you know, the time for, for the folks getting there. Helping, helping out. So, so thank you for that. Other than that, we're like I said, I'm, I'm just getting my feet under myself a little bit here and trying to get myself organized. And, and Pat and moving forward. Other than that, hockey has been pretty quiet. They've been, they've been around, but overall very good. We still continue to push tip four-on-one for folks, but then again, we still, we get those. Hey, there was this going on, on, over the weekend. We're getting those on Monday morning. But it makes it very difficult to, to follow up on those, on those sorts of things. So. But other than, other than, we're going forward. We're pushing to get Joe Nauricchio into January Police Academy. We have to go in front of council because there's an extension there in time for the police academy. Only allows us six months before they have to get trained. I don't anticipate there'll be an issue with that since he's already part-time certified. But we have to go meet with the council at the end of the month in order to get that set.
It'll be offline for a bit then?
Yeah.
In January.
In January, right?
Yeah, hopefully starting in January. We pushed him off. The, the other academy starts next week and we just couldn't do it anticipating that we're gonna lose one member for a medical. We'll be down, we'll be down a person. We just couldn't afford to be down another person for that time. So we'd like to push that out till January. So it doesn't, it doesn't hurt so bad for, for us.
And I can tell you about that.
Okay.
Alrighty. Anything else, David?
No, I think, I think that covers it. Unless you have any questions.
Alright. Dylan?
Well, to start things off, precipitation amounts and rainfall we've received.
Nice and green.
Yeah. So that, that's usually in front of you. The shades of green represent the percentages that we have. So it correlates exactly with what I have. July of this year, we received eight point one-nine inches of rain. July of last year, we only received three point nine-seven inches of rain. So we almost, you know, just over doubled the amount of rainfall that we received last year. However, year to date, we're still down three-quarters of an inch twenty-twenty and significantly more in twenty-nineteen. One month into that pilot, we started magnesium hydroxide. We've seen our ammonia concentrations drop off by fifty percent coming out of the boones. So with that being said, we've saved already $6,000 in chemical just on chlorine from twenty-twenty.
Why did that happen?
So what we're adding enhances biological nitrogenation. So instead of us having to add more chlorine to.
Little bugger's eat it.
Yeah, to oxidize the ammonia coming through the facility that microorganisms consume. They convert it to nitrogen.
This is the little, this is the little experimental system.
Oh, this is because of the system. Gotcha. Okay. So that's good.
It's a good thing.
It's great. The milk of magnesia, that's right.
The milk of magnesia is working.
Considering.
Alright, it's got a bigger box.
I had figured that about a month is how long it would take before it starts to make its way through. It's been exactly a month. July ninth, midday is when we started it. So it's been almost exactly a month. And we've seen it start to already reduce it significantly.
This is very encouraging.
It is.
So we also can attribute the chemical savings to the changes that we made at the plant between the new breakpoint chlorination pump. We were able to dose it much lower and have it perform well in a static mixer, which mixes the effluent in injection point of the chlorine. So those, just those two things alone has saved us a significant amount of money in chemicals. So all in all, it's been good. It's, I'd like to, I'd like to say if we started this in June or May of this year, beginning of the magnesium hydroxide pilot, we probably would have had results prior to breakpoint chlorination season in July first. But it's tough to say this because of how the weather, you know, the temperature is a huge factor in, in the boones.
And it has been cold.
Yeah. Just, just from last Friday to this week, this Monday, there was a two degrees Celsius change in the boones. So I mean, that's a significant change when it comes to microorganisms.
So Dylan, what's your latest recommendation on drought status and whether people can water their lawns again or not water their lawns and fill their swimming pools and?
So we're out of the drought. I would just recommend that to be cautious about it because if we go through August, the way we're going right now, for example, the other day, last Sunday, last Sunday in Thornton, people received over three and a half inches of rain. Here in Waterville, we only had point three. So we're receiving significantly less rainfall than other communities around us. So other people may say, well, we're not in a drought. Waterville isn't getting the same amount of rainfall as the other places are. And I double checked with between National Weather Service that station they have up in front of the facility in our rain gauge and they're almost identical in terms of rainfall. So we're just not getting what everyone else is getting. If you guys want to take the ban off, the water ban off, that'll be fine. Just as long as you guys are willing to reinstate it if we run into issues later in the year.
One of the things that DES has recommended is to watch the rest of August because we're looking at higher temperatures historically. And if, if we get rain with the higher temperatures, we'll be in good shape in the fall. But if we don't get, you know, keep up this rain pace that we're on right now, that we saw in July, we could be right back into the abnormally dry situation or even minor drought pretty quickly. So I, I just, I'm with Dylan. I would wait the rest of this month and look at, at your meeting in September.
First meeting in September?
Yeah, and then we can, we can attend.
I, I would agree with you wholeheartedly because if you take a look at this chart that you have, the two overburdened wells that are located near Camden and over by Albany or whatever.
That's these two light blue dots.
They're showing, they're showing normal. It's not necessarily the precipitation that we're so concerned about. It's, it's the level of groundwater and recharge and like the bedrock wells and stuff. So seeing how we have overburdened wells, if you will, I think we should keep it on another month or so.
Yeah, if, if these, if these light blue dots, these light blue circles.
Pretty much bracket us for people who see this.
Right, they're, they're right in between.
One to the northeast and one to the southwest.
But if, if we come back in, because they update this every month, if we come back at the beginning of September and those are going up to a darker blue color, then we know that the recharge is occurring in the water table. And if that happens, then we'll be in good shape to be able to say we can start easing back on the restrictions.
That's, that's the key indicator, I think, in my mind anyways, versus precipitation.
And I think this, you know, with the map being so green throughout the state, I think you're gonna start seeing some recharge in this groundwater. And that's where we, because you still have situations, even though this one is Osiphe over here to the east. Notice that they have two hundred percent above average precipitation, but they are still in a low status with the groundwater. Okay, so I, I just think we need to be cautious for a little while longer. I, you know, and we'll ease up on them as soon as we can.
Okay. I don't hear a lot from people about it.
Now, there aren't a lot of people that.
Lawns.
Right.
You know, and I don't know.
Well, certain, July, absolutely. They didn't have to do any irrigation.
And Sean hasn't had to do the barrels much either, so, yeah.
Just a very quick question. What's the difference between an overburdened well and a bedrock well?
Overburden kind of takes into consideration some different types of wells that are associated with gravel deposits.
Gravel pack well.
Gravel pack wells versus a drilled well through bedrock.
Okay, actually going down into.
Yeah, so you're, you're either in the overburden, in the gravel.
Right.
That's where the water's coming from.
Right.
Or you've drilled down into bedrock.
The depth is the biggest.
And the depth is the biggest thing. For example, our wells are like twenty-five, thirty feet deep and my well at my, my place in Camden is three hundred and seventy-five feet deep and that's a bedrock well.
Right. So you're right, going all the way down to the.
And typically a bedrock well would have a recharge area way away, not just in the vicinity of the well.
Where our, our wells are impacted by what's happening right around them.
Actually, we'll know.
That's where they're getting the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else, Dylan?
Not, I was, Mark had asked me actually to, to comment on this. The recovery on our well, on our wells in particular have drastically sped up from July's rainfall. Not to the rate where it was, say, twenty nineteen, but I compared it, went back and looked at data based on the recovery time when the pump shut off, how fast a well come, well level comes up. And it's gone up significantly as opposed to June and May, which is, is good. So that's also an encouraging thing to mention.
Okay. And, and I think I saw something in the opening letter that said we, we may actually be able to get some of those things done on our water project?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow with the engineers, but they continue to talk to contractors and there are sections of, of their schedules that are opening up. And we may be able to pull like the river crossing out.
Great.
Or other pieces of this out and get going right away. So.
Will this be more expensive for us or will it?
Well, I don't know. They'll have to bid it and we'll have to compare to the engineering estimates.
Right.
But the other thing that Joe mentioned to me and we'll talk more about tomorrow is costs are starting, the bids that are coming in are starting to go down a little closer to the engineering estimate of cost.
Have we noticed any more deterioration of the line crossing the river?
Not anything that's significant, I mean.
No.
I attribute that to just our level coming back up. That helps a lot.
And we're still gonna go ahead with the emergency.
Yeah, we do. We, we have a plan already. They've pulled that out.
Right.
And as a minimum, we will get that constructed before the winter.
And are we still looking at buying our own pipe?
We are. Actually, that's another discussion. Yeah.
Okay.
Because the contractors have responded pretty positively to that.
Okay, great. Excellent. Alright, Jim?
Yeah, I guess, Mike?
I hear, I hear you have a new building group associated with you.
Building group?
Yes. That road repair group.
Oh, yes, yes. Apparently there's another contract. Yes. That was a rush item and I was unaware that it was a rush. So there have been, there are several areas around town, as you well know, on corners of intersections.
Right.
That we periodically address. And we address them all usually at the same time. And given, given the amount of rain we were supposed to have over this past weekend, I figured Monday would be a good day to do that. So, and I was not told that it was a priority item from the conversation I had.
So basically, you're gonna have to redo that whole thing that was done anyhow, right?
Yeah, that'll.
That's all part of the project.
It's all part of the project. The project that we can lose.
Which, which is, I have not heard back from the Johnson boys on what that schedule will be, but the drop dead date is to be completed by September thirtieth. That's part of the RFP.
Okay.
Yeah, and as I reported to you, that's the main reason why legal counsel said it's okay to let it go. We would like to send a letter. So we can talk about that.
Okay, great. What else is happening, Jim?
Not much. I guess I was supposed to chat with you about the solid waste collection?
Well, yeah, I just, I included these numbers because the solid waste committee received them and I wanted to make sure that Margaret and Mike had a chance to look at them. But Rich, is there anything you wanna?
No, no. I, I don't think so, I think.
Well, we're tracking basically right along the historical. We are right on historical numbers for solid waste. And again, that's the same issue as public safety.
Right.
That we just talked about is there's not as much commercial activity.
Activity there in life, the rub.
Yeah, we have, we've sent three loads north. So to date, as of today, and all three loads, twelve tons per load. So it's thirty-six tons of gone.
In, in August.
In August, yeah, today. So. I expect another eighty-ton month.
I think we'll be more.
That's right.
Traditionally, August is our busiest. Last two weeks of August is the busiest time.
Well, you can look at the historical, like eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-two. So I think Jim's right, we'll be right on.
And I think it'll give us a greater picture of where we sit.
Yeah, because commercials are a little bit better both in July and now.
Right.
There, there seem to be, the occupancy numbers are up and that sort of thing.
Yeah, there seem to be a lot of people around town.
There are. People tend to take the last couple of weeks of August in a historical, in a regular environment. Last two weeks off before getting ready for the kids for school and trying to recharge and.
Yeah, yeah.
And our costs, our costs per ton and cost per trip numbers are, are actually a little bit lower than they have been historically, which is good. You know, but we haven't done things like purchase tires for the truck for the winter and that sort of thing. So I think those.
We haven't had any major maintenance on the truck either this year.
No, don't say those things out loud. Throw salt over your shoulder.
It'll be your fault. It's always my fault. Just add it to the list, right?
Yeah, but you're right, Mike. We, we haven't. It's been good. The truck's acting good. So we'll hope that that continues. So. Alright, and just to provide you with the update for.
Summer camp.
Summer camp numbers are great. The lawn sheep that's at your place are, I, I was missing numbers for counselors in training. They are actually counted as campers because they pay a fee to participate in the CIT program. So I added those numbers in. And right now we are twenty-seven camper days ahead of the twenty-nineteen total season, not counting the week we're in right now. And eight hundred and ninety-four camper days over last year. So she's having a great summer. I did want to point out that the week we're in right now is the end of the camp season, which I think is even better when you're looking at the two thousand nineteen number because you, we're comparing to an eight or nine-week program.
Yeah.
You know, with a seven-week program and we're ahead. So those numbers are good.
Yeah, we kind, we kind of knew that going.
Yeah, no, things, things are looking up.
Okay.
Admin, I just want to make sure that for people watching online that we let everybody know that the office will be closed on Friday to walk-in business. We will be answering emails, but we're doing the renovations here at Town Hall on Friday.
Okay. Alrighty. Looking at our calendars going forward, again, re-emphasizing what Mark said, Town Office is gonna be closed on August thirteenth for some renovations. Planning Board regular meeting is tomorrow. And this is the one where they're considering the Green Peaks expansion.
Correct.
Green Peaks too, yeah. But I heard from several planning board members that there's been a lot of information that's already been distributed for people to look at and that type of thing.
The board does have.
Yeah, we gotta have. It's been at the town. You've advertised it.
It has.
Right. There's that. And there's also, which may spark some interest, I think, a conceptual discussion, consultation.
Yeah.
With Craig Larson.
On his personal property?
On his personal property.
On his personal property, but I'm not aware precisely what, what it is he wants to discuss there.
Okay. We had one meeting for the New Hampshire Run for the Fallen, which is going to be on, on September eighteenth.
Saturday.
Our next meeting is August eighteenth at ten AM. That is going to be a Zoom meeting.
Just a couple of updates there. You had asked me for budgets and things like that. It's going to be a lot lower cost overall than it has been historically because there are no tents in the state of New Hampshire or northern Massachusetts. One, one tent company told us if they could get fifty more tents, they would be able to, to rent them. There, there's a, there are so many events.
Moving outdoor.
Are they gonna use the rec department tent?
No, they're, we're gonna figure something else out. We're, we're still working on.
Yeah.
No tables, no chairs, no tents, nothing for events. No tables, no chairs, no tents, nothing for events. Uh, and no caterers either.
Yes.
Everybody's busy. So, so we are, we are working the problem, as solitary folks say. And uh, we'll have something for you next Tuesday.
There will be a race.
There will be, there will be an event and it just may not include some of the things that it historically has.
And we don't have a second meeting in August, do we?
No, I didn't think we did.
Well, no, but we really need to because of the budget stuff. Even if it's a shorter meeting, we do need to.
Time.
Okay, so that'll be the fourth.
That'll be the twenty-fifth.
That's the fourth Wednesday.
Are you here?
I was gonna wash my hair, but.
I will not be here.
You won't.
All right.
If I care, we'll have to take over.
Oh, we can pick another day.
Or we can pick another date. Are you gonna be back?
I'm, I'm going away on the twenty-second and I won't be back until the following Saturday.
Um, could we meet Monday, the, what's that, Monday?
Monday, the thirtieth?
The thirtieth?
Um, yeah, I can.
Can you do that, Mike?
When's Labor Day?
Not until the.
It's September sixth, the following, the following a week.
Okay.
So we'll do it on the thirtieth, not twenty-third.
Morning or afternoon?
I would like morning, please.
Sure.
Yep.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock on the thirtieth. August thirtieth.
At ten AM.
At ten AM. See, Coalition Community Update and Discussion of Tax Rate Impact. We did share this with the school board. I haven't heard anything back of you. So I assume that the fact sheet meets their needs and.
Well, I, I take that back. The business administrator got back to me and he said everything that we're saying.
This is for the SAU, right?
Yeah, the SAU.
Yeah, yeah. So everything we're, we're saying is essentially correct on that. Um.
So the question is, how do you wanna, how do you want us to?
I would just put it out on the website. Does that make sense to you guys?
I would do that and maybe a Facebook comment on uh. Just maybe I would ask the school committee to put a Facebook comment out or through their media that the information on uh upcoming. Upcoming changes to the school bu- school budget and educational funding are available that'll link to it.
Okay.
Yep.
They have a meeting tomorrow, right?
They do.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, alrighty, National Night Out Financial Update. We had that from David and we need to encumber some funds. I forgot what the exact amount is.
Twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents.
Twenty-nine fifty-ten. So I will move that we encumber uh the funds for National Night Out. Twenty-two and the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents.
Can we define that to the folks out in town that that's a surplus of money that we have in our account that's specifically gonna be used for that for next year?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to get.
You done did it.
You done did it. Can I have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a forest uh land agreement. This is that annual thing that we sign.
Forty thousand dollars.
No, this is forty thousand acres and give us forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, we like that. And we also have some merit pay recognition.
Yeah, I just um would like your concurrence with these. We um, we had two individuals at the. Uh, rec department boat venue who assisted public safety with. Um, a guest that got stuck in a paddle boat.
Got stuck in the pedals, did they?
They did, yeah, they did.
Yeah.
And Dave and, Dave and Patrick had to go out there and cut him out.
Use a sawzall during a lightning storm.
Yeah.
Electricity stand while standing in the water.
It was an exciting day.
Hopefully someone was videoing this, just in case.
Yeah, but what does the boat look like? I haven't heard sawzall yet in this story.
Yeah.
It was repaired.
It was repaired. It's actually in sawzall. It was just a, it was just a bar. They got their foot stuck underneath.
Underneath the bar?
Couldn't get it out and they cut the bar and now the bar got re.
The, the Department of Public Safety cost the Department of Public Works three hundred dollars in that big bag. So. Because I had to buy, I had to buy the, the material to weld aluminum with.
Yeah. But these two young folks that work at the boats uh did a great job.
No problem at all.
Sure, I'll second that. Make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll vote for it.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Chapel Committee Land Purchase, you're gonna meet with, with them.
At five o'clock this afternoon.
Give them some clues.
That letter is great. It's very succinct.
Did anyone read, everyone read it in the package?
Yeah.
Perfect. It puts it in their court and gives them exactly what we need.
Yeah, okay. Uh, anything else on the capital projects review?
Um, no, we've already told you about the water line.
Um, and the road repair.
Hydrants and the road repairs. Well, one thing on the road repairs.
Wait a minute, are we talking about the same hydrants? The, the hydrants on either side of the?
On either side of the bridge. Yeah. Um, on the roads, uh, Jim has contacted Josh McAllister. And we're looking at getting the initial design work done from Village Road around the Village Road.
Mm-hmm.
Snows Brook and Valley.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that we would be starting to put together the engineering estimates for the next. Phase two of the road repair uh CIP projects.
Okay.
So, yeah, in in one.
There's gonna be more in the next one that we do. There'll be more than just that section, right?
Well, it depends on what the estimate is. I mean, if they estimate that cost and it's. Another nine hundred thousand or a million and a half, it may, it may be the only thing. If it's, if it's less than that, then maybe we'll add others, other roads to it. But I'm, I have a feeling that it's gonna be right up there.
In spite of the fact that we have a citizen who says we ought to just go for the eight billion.
Well, we could do that if you.
Well, um, can't say that I wholeheartedly disagree. But um, what I've requested from HEB is that um. They make a proposal for the design of that section of road. Which I've requested be done by the next meeting, board meeting. And if you approve that proposal, then I ask uh for a December first deadline. For the design work to be completed so that we can include it in the series.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. All right. Or concerns and directors?
Uh, Rich had an email that I put in your packet.
I did.
Yeah, about the truck that's still.
Oh, Irene, yeah. I didn't get any, I didn't get any. Anybody answered, so I guess the answer is no, nobody's interested in commemorating.
What we could do is knock off half of forty-nine for a week and just pretend, go back to the good old days.
It was just a thought.
We can all go up through, get, get out, out of the valley by going up a mad.
Well, we can have T-shirts that say, I survived Irene or.
It was something, you know.
Could prove that you're a property owner at that time.
Large garbage cans and dump them in back of Sosa's truck.
We could do that.
No, I was thinking of something. I don't know if AA wanted to do like an Irene's Path hike. As a commemoration or if we, if someone had any uh slides, wanted to do a little slideshow. For new people here as to what happened ten years ago to the trails and the road.
Actually, you know, that's not a bad idea.
I didn't get any, I know I was like.
I'll talk to Leah, I'll talk to Leah.
Talk to Leah and sift and neutralize.
Here, WVAIA.
I sent Bo Warren.
As a guided hike.
He could talk about how the trails were, had to be reconfiguring where they were.
It was a big.
It was a big thing.
Well, we got all kinds of pictures of replacing the bridge. We've got.
My, my deal.
We've got a video, we've got your videos of.
Remember we used to have a pedestrians that you walked up and walked across and walked down?
Yeah, back in the day.
Back in the day.
I remember watching all, being down with you at West Branch.
Yeah.
And watching, waiting for the, the only bridge we wanted taken out never got taken out.
Yeah, I know. We could have, I could have been a champ.
Yeah.
Could have had a new bridge.
Well, there you go. Okay, um, any other correspondence?
No. Oh, uh, correspondence, um, yeah, I have a couple of things in there, right? Um, so I gave you a copy just uh for your information about. Um, the Town Utilities Letter that's uh part of the Green Peak Two. Um, and it had a couple of things which will be conditions of approval if, if the plan is approved. Um, and just making sure you didn't have any problem with that. Um, then we already touched on the issue um with the road.
Of a citizen deciding to take matters into their own hands and trying to build a town and I guess I will say.
He hasn't built a town, so.
So I, but I guess I will just state for the record that. It is inappropriate for someone to make any changes to somebody else's property. I don't care whether it's town property or my property or your property. You are the only ones, the property owner are the only ones that can make that decision. And you can't just go out and do those things and you can get yourself in serious legal trouble if you do.
Yeah, that's part of the issue with the road.
Yeah, so.
So we will, we will, like I said, send a, we'll draft up a letter and, and send it to the, to the individuals involved. And just ask them in the future to please contact the town and we'll make the repairs.
And we had committed.
And we have committed to make the repairs.
Repairs, but it.
I've got something else. There's a tree over by Lot, maybe thirty-six-one over on that curve there. It's broken in half. It's kind of hanging in the trees over there. And it might be on the cross-country pass. It might be on the mountain path, uh, heading over on Valley Road. Across where the new development is going to be.
Okay.
There's a half snap, snap tree that's kind of hanging in there that might come down.
Okay, so that's by uh Golden Heights?
I think it's before Golden Heights, but it's in that, you can't miss it.
Okay.
It's in there and I'm afraid it'll hit somebody who's on the bike trail. I don't know if it's the mountains.
That would be out of our right of way, but I mean, if you'd like, you, you know, we can.
Or maybe you could contact the mountain or something.
See if they'll let us go on there and clean it up.
Um, we do need a short non-public session, very short non-public session. So we're gonna go into uh non-public at three eighteen if I have a motion to do so.
Move three eighteen? No, it's four eighteen.
No, it's three forty-eight.
Three forty-eight, sorry, I'm looking at it. Three forty-eight.
I knew I shouldn't have reset that clock.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Sign is here.
Hey, Eric.
Is there, is there a top limit on it or do I have to check?
There is a top limit. We said it.
Yeah, but did we get a little device that like, if we have it in our car, it doesn't read? You have like four or five of those maybe?
It's up in the parking lot. If you want to take a look at it, we still have to register it.
Right, this is the permit, this is the permanent.
No, this is.
The trailer one, I'm still waiting for that.
And the trailer one's got the uh light cell on at the charge, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, incident solar, uh, plus we can plug it in. So we welcome to come take a look at.
We're gonna put the old one aside for now.
We don't have an old one.
Oh, we have the old one.
We don't have.
This is the trailer version.
Oh, this is, oh, we're not perfect place yet.
We haven't gotten the permanent station one.
So, but it's back there if you'd like to look at it.
Great.
Great. Get it out there on Valley Road.